Welcome, everybody. Thank you in person. Thank you online. There's a bunch of legends.
So as you're getting organized, as you're looking at the screen, I don't know if all the screens are showing the picture of our two elementary school teachers. There he is, our fourth grade teachers that are the winners of the ten thousand dollar classroom transformation.
Alright.
And I stole the picture from Christie New, but the following of the work I know goes to Amy and Andrea. They've done a great job and they're very excited about the potential that this will bring to their classroom and to maybe some other classrooms down the road. So it's a great way to start.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Alright, Evan, if you'd like to.
I'd like to ask for consent motion of one point zero two approval of the regular board meeting agenda on the recommendation of superintendent to approve the April twenty first, twenty twenty five regular board meeting agenda.
Second.
Any questions on the agenda? Okay, there was a minor adjustment that was made since the agenda meeting, but we've got that covered. All, all of them?
Alright.
Any post? So. I'd like to ask for motion and consent of one point zero three approval of the regular board meeting minutes. On the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the April seventh regular board meeting minutes.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes on the April seventh meeting? It's all in favor?
Alright.
Any post? We'll move. No speaking in court? Then in that case, Christine, it comes right to you. Moving right along.
Thank you. I had to add this couple of.
Okay.
On that thirty, but it's not on this.
Alright.
One of them happened to be the ten thousand dollars. So I'm here on behalf of the team here, Geneseo. Just offer a brief overview for the Board of Education. That's connected to the school improvement process and the school improvement grant that were amidst the steps to develop a school comprehensive education program for grades three through eight, which is our target population. I want to talk to you a little bit about that. For me, it was a lot of acronyms and I like to really try and simplify things. So that is my goal with this, but this was developed in collaboration with Mr. Beal. And this is clearly, if you have anything to add, please feel free. So this outlines our current agenda that we're working through developing and implementing school comprehensive education plan that will complement our district comprehensive improvement plan that is already underway. So our focus is create growth by focusing on something that's existing, but we're looking at expanding and something that's existing, but we're redefining it. So our goal is not to come in with all new initiatives, but how can we really capitalize what we're already doing? And strengthen that from the inside out and using the key players within our committees, our teams, and then our greater staff to be able to support the work that's necessary in order to gain increased student achievement. So, uh, acronyms. In twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, there were measures that identified Geneseo Central School as a potential target district because our subgroup of Hispanic and Latino students were not making adequate progress according to our Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. Another acronym there. So in twenty three, twenty four, we developed a district comprehensive improvement plan, also known as the DCEP. But we were also then granted the the great ask of focusing on additional subgroups, students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students. They became identified subgroups. Quite often, students overlap across those three groups. Can I move that button? Sorry, don't. You can go back. There we go. Thank you. The remote is not working. Are you able to go back?
Locked, alright.
A lot, a lot. We're going to go back to a previous slide. Thank you. So currently, our DCEP plan is in place. And there was some improvement, and I'll show you on the next screen. We have now been identified as a targeted school of improvement or a TSI for grades three through eight. They often refer to TSI as elementary. Elementary really encompasses third through eight, any testing level for ELA and for math assessments. So this spring, because of that designation, we had opportunity to apply for a school improvement grant, which is known as a SIG. And that SIG improvement grant, we were given to help support the planning and implementation of our SEP, School Comprehensive Education Plan. And then again, this school plan will ultimately be connected to the district improvement plan. It all is going to be brought together. The most important piece is gaining information from our community, from our staff and from our students. So I'll talk through the process of that. Yeah, this. No, you're, that's okay. So, we applied for about eleven thousand, I think, stuff, right? For the school improvement grant to help us with the planning process. We will have access to seventy five thousand dollars. Seventy five thousand dollars for being a targeted school of improvement. In addition, another fifty thousand for being the, a district. A school of improvement. So again, you can see that here, we did make some progress that is related to both attendance and overall ELA and math scores for our initial targeted subgroup Hispanic and Latino. It's important to also point out that we ended up on, we ended up hitting the threshold of thirty students in these subgroups, which prior to in previous years, we did not have that same number of students in these subgroups. Therefore, we were not identified in this way. So although our students may of, some of these populations may not have been consistently making the progress consistent with their peers, our number of students in the cohorts were not at that threshold. We are now at that threshold. So that also was a reflection of how our community here in Geneseo is changing and is shifting to become more diverse. So our team right now, we have a lot of hands in the pot, which is fantastic. We have been working and analyzing data, both our absenteeism rates, our state's test scores, really asking questions that are driven by the state to help us identify areas that we can focus on in developing our plan. We have met with our New York State Education Department liaison a couple of times now to just make sure that we're on the right path and we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing. We are currently in the process of creating surveys for students, for staff and for community members. We have already had in-person conversations with parents. We've also already started student interviews. So specific questions about, what's coming about your state at school? What do you like about Geneseo? What's challenging about Geneseo? What makes it easy to come to school? What makes it difficult? Really just personal conversations, which gets, gets to know the kids even more. And again, our goal is to build on what we're already working on and how we're supporting students through all students, so tier one instructions, tier two instruction, some students, tier three instruction, very small targeted population of students, and supporting that, both the behavior and academics. By June, the end of June, June thirtieth, we will have our school comprehensive education plan ready to roll and submitted. And that's when it's due to the state. Just kind of just gives you another visual of the process we're going through. We've already done step one, step two. Right now, we are, we had to flip-flop these only because we, part of our grant, our school improvement grant is through using Panorama again. And we had to purchase that. So we just flip-flop those. The state gave us the okay for that. So we are currently listening to student interviews and creating our survey data. And then we'll reflect and synthesize. So we're moving right along, which is great. Once we're all done, we'll meet with the liaison and then submit. So our current strategies for improvement is really focusing on chronic absenteeism, weekly mental health meetings with targeted interventions. That's something we've already been doing. We will continue to do that. And we have seen positive impact of that. We will continue to refine our intervention processes. So the academic intervention supports at elementary, middle school and high school continue the development of guaranteed and viable curriculum, adoption of new resources, increase community engagement opportunities. We continue with that. And then targeted professional development. There was a large group of us between elementary, middle school and high school that just recently attended the RTI At Work Conference, which is a part of the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. And so we now have a guiding coalition that will help us really target behavior and academic strategies to meet the needs of students. And again, our hope is that this isn't going to look very much different. Again, it'll just be more targeted and refined. And since our commitment is really success for all students, reading the Geneseo vision, it aligns to the work that we have been doing with RTI. So there are responses to interventions. And again, we're committed to enhancing and refining those processes. What questions do you have?
So you said thirty students was the threshold. Is that, is that a percentage based on total population or is it a, just a concrete numbers? State, just a, okay, so any district that hits thirty is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So the absenteeism, I understand the curriculum, community engagement, professional development, are there metrics that you put going to attach to that?
Yeah.
The submitted plan?
Yep. And when we have the plan out
Yeah.
created, that's something we'll share, obviously here. It'll be, again, it'll support the overall district comprehensive improvement plan, but it's really, it will be very targeted. So, for example, part of the district comprehensive DCEP, we wanted people to be able to attend. So professional development. We wanted to be able to send people to this institute that really gives them a solid foundation on how to respond to interventions, whether they're working or they're not with kids. How can we look at things differently? And how do we work together to build momentum from the ground up? And have the key stakeholders that are across the staff to be able to work with staff, work with their teams, to be able to look at kids in a way that's meaningful, that has the support from their colleagues, that the answer is from the professionals within their team. So again, giving them that opportunity. So now, as we look forward, there's additional conferences that are coming up. It would like to be able to have people attend. That's at the grand scale. There's so much professional learning that's grassroots and it happens right here. And so having these guiding coalition and this guiding team, they're able to help support one another and learn in a professional manner and have professional conversations.
So my last question then is, I guess, Dr. Both you and Dr. Hunter is, is, is some portion of whatever you need, whatever that is, is going to be covered by grant application, but is anything over and above that? Do we have enough insight at this stage to factor that into the budget?
I'll start with an answer and then I'll see it. Okay, Megan and Christine. If you can reflect back maybe almost a month ago to those diverse, that mean that huge set of slides on reading, writing, math, progressions that we are moving our students through. Those are the internal resources that are budget dependent, as well as dependent on the teams that Christie, Craig and Megan have built at their levels so that they are becoming knowledgeable in the, not only the intervention, but the curriculum pieces so that year by year, we're growing and expanding to meet those needs. So it's, it's built into this, built in intentionally during the budget process, intentionally so.
So summer curriculum work, it's around, we're really looking at those resources and, and understanding them in the way that we're able to supply all students.
And you said there was a community engagement and a, is there a family engagement portion as well? Or are there, is there a portion that is empowering the family and communicating with the family to help engage with them with the education?
So what I'm hearing you ask is, are you referring to specific subgroups? So we've had conversations around, so an example of a great conversation I had today was with one of our muscle teachers who shared something that another, a neighboring district is doing to empower their families in their English language, in their understanding of the English language. So of course, that got us talking about, okay, this is great. Hold on, this is where we get into that planning phase because how can we, again, utilize the resources that we have both here, but also in surrounding communities who already have started this process? And that great love is important. Well, good question.
So. So moving forward, the development of the three A school comprehensive education plan was timeline for that and so back to a couple goals and objectives that might be obviously targeted to to fruition on that. What's your timeline for that?
It has to be submitted by June thirtieth of, of this year. So our objectives will be based on our data. So for example, we have analyzed the data related to the subgroup of students with disabilities or New York State Math Four. So I'm just offering an example. We would look at that data and we'd say, this is where we scored. This is how we, we would like to be able to improve. And this, these are the steps that we're going to take to be able to get there. And it's going to take time because in, in each test is so different. I would like to offer an example. Or this was a part of my elementary date as well, where we have New York State testing underway right now. Heard from the news that ELA passed. We had planned to have that started. We had all hits ready, all accommodations were set and ready to go. The computer system was not ready to go. And that was a statewide issue. And that happened to us two days in a row. So you have students who have been diagnosed with anxiety, ADHD, eighty, even your regulations. Your regulars, who are ready to go. They are asked to sit and wait for twenty minutes, for forty minutes, because the direction from the state is to please wait and let's see if we can get this computer system up and running. And then they pushed it out for another hour. So I mean, we were on the edge of our seats following the state, not, not like we then had it happen the first day. It'll be all ready to go for the second time. Because we were guaranteed that from the state and it wasn't. We don't know what they'll do with the state test course. I just know, we all know, our students took the exams and they did the best they could under the circumstances that they were given, having to sit and wait, some of them an hour and a half, waiting for the state.
And there is some big pushback across the state districts about how valid are these wars going to be? Given the interruptions and
How could they?
Test of, yeah.
I think they would have started an hour earlier on their end, but.
And some people were able to start and then
I mean the students, I mean the computer system. No, not the students.
And the state came out saying it was a vendor that.
Sure, of course.
We get our break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They hired the vendor.
It's always a vendor, yeah.
So there's some things that are outside of our control, so that's
So I, I think that's a good reminder of what's outside of our control. I, I just, I can't emphasize enough of the work that Christie, Craig and Megan have done about not just filling out a grant and then waiting to the end of the year to see what the results are. Their work of building through internal programs that they've already started with structures, of team leaders that they've already started, introducing new and sometimes not, all the well-loved processes about looking at data, making decisions, making decisions across grade levels. So the example that Christie used about grade four and math, that's going to be the work of grade two, three and four. And Craig and Megan are doing the same thing. What they're trying to accomplish in, in six and seven is going to impact five, six, seven. So it's, it's a building process. The old saying that it takes a couple of minutes to fall into the hole, but a couple of hours and years to dig out a hole? Well, you only dig out of the hole over a long period of time if you get the right people building in the right direction. I'd be willing to say to you that I can't wait to come back two to, two to three years from now. And I'm going to tell you the numbers are going to be different. They, they're, because the, the people and the processes are very much driven towards not just what these needy kids, but what all good learning should be directed for kids.
We deal with them, we see the finished product in July, maybe.
So I saw on one of the slides, you've got some new resources for math, I think for, for the ELA, it's like being readers, being writers, right? What is the resources for math?
So math, we're actually looking at it. So nope, you have not, we have three that we narrowed it down to. We're looking at and exploring it right now. They have resources from Amplify. I ready because we already have that. So we have access to the old curriculum resources. I think I already started it. Nice job of trying to sell their product. Yeah, but it's great. It's, so they've already been exploring that. We have Amplify resources. We have meeting in May, see with them, bring questions. And then we have Greg Tang, which is another resource that would require some supplementing, but it's a solid resource for discourse.
All built in to the budget. Thank you.
So I know that there's a, is it mandated for the test to be administered electronically?
There's, there's two blocks of funding, the fifteen and seventy-five, but are those one-time deals or will it be ongoing?
It will be ongoing. It takes three years to get off of the list.
Okay.
The target is.
When, when do they hit? Next school year or this school year?
It's actually all different. They just shifted some of the availability. I think one is available as of July.
Yes, and I think one September.
Yeah, September. So it's nice. It'll support some of your homework. So it's good. And then I apologize that my live link, that there were updates. So if you're interested, feel free to look at pictures, but just a quick update from elementary. I was excited to share about the activity where they, the last final thirteenth hour, they submitted and we were granted the ten thousand dollars, which is fantastic for fourth grade, to provide furniture makeover. We also had the Heart Healthy Assembly, which was led by Mr. Mix and Mr. Grimsley. So that raised over twenty five hundred dollars for the American Heart Association. It ended with some very entertaining competitions between students, staff, or jump the rope, where it's a very large jump rope that spins around. Came down, Mr. Chapman and I, and Mr. Chapman took the win. And then we also had another interesting twist that Mr. Grimsley had added where we, cafeteria was fantastic. We were, we gave them pounds and pounds of spaghetti. We dyed it all blue because it was part of our Gold Blue Assembly. And there were about ten of us that had volunteered to have spaghetti dumped on their head. Those were the most hearts. Had the most spaghetti. And that was Mr. Wilcox, Mr. Rose. So they were covered in spaghetti. We all got a little bit of spaghetti, but they got the most.
I've taken pictures of that.
Yes. So that was a lot of fun. Great, great school spirit. And then the PTFA had their first hero dance, which kids were invited and welcome to bring their favorite hero. And they came for a little night dance, six, seven o'clock on a Friday night. So that was wonderful. And our, because those are representations of courage and grit, which are our Gold Blue trees and I know. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Please extend our gratitude, appreciation to your students for their grit for sticking with the test.
Yeah, good point.
I think they probably should have more grit than most of us up here would have. So.
They really were better.
I think you could say all of us.
Definitely all of us.
Even the middle school, we had to send them, stopped, let them go to lunch. Then we brought some back after lunch to finish it and they were positive and upbeat and the staff was on board to do it. So, you know, kudos to, to staff and students. Just trudging through it, getting it done.
Any other admin updates? Alright, thank you.
So this is our final budget presentation in the series of presentations that we've walked through. And again, I may be doing the presentation, but you know that the intense work of myself, Tell, John Holt, Stephanie Hill, principals, and they've worked right through their team leaders in order to make sure that the numbers and the programs drive the important work that we need accomplished for our students in the twenty five, twenty six school year. In the past, I've, I've used this as a way to say that these numbers tell a story. But today, this is about essentially the numbers. I want people to understand what the numbers are. So if we start by taking a look at our goals, I'm going to be as honest as I possibly can with you. I think we've done a very nice job with goal one. I think with goal two, enhancing enhancement to STEAM programs, I think we're still a work in progress. I think we've done a nice job with enhancement to school culture, transportation funding, we're still a work in progress as we look at multiple opportunities to safely, but yet fiscally responsibly transport our students. And I think we've done a nice job with the final two goals of generating aid for future years and transparency. The budget building process hasn't altered, except we've now moved to that phase of April twenty one, our final budget. The three things I want you to think about when we talk about the final budget. Our budget to budget increase was five point two percent. Two, our levy rate increase went from three point seven percent last year to two point nine percent this year. And again, thanks to the consistency and diligence. The, um, consistency and diligence of Stephanie Hill, our budget was built. On quality budgeting principles. Um, and collaboration, but the quality of our budgeting principles is a third factor that goes into this report. So the progression is, um. What we've been showing you over the last, uh, couple of months. Uh, March twenty-four was our first budget. Uh, it represents those strong budgeting principles. Uh, it represents, um, uh, the work that our principals and team leaders did. In putting together the expenditure budget. Um, and it represents, um, the, uh, under, first understanding of revenue. Uh, you've heard me say before that budget must. Include high-quality teaching and learning. Responsible levy and balanced budgets. This was our first. Organization of those three factors. And what you saw and what we'll see again now is two more looks. At how that expenditure and revenue plan evolved on four, seven and today. Um, on four, uh, nineteen. You'll notice where the gap is at that first look. At best budgeting principles. And full understanding of budgeting needs. We went into first draft budget on April seventh. A lot of difficult decisions occurred. Between the twenty-fourth and April seventh. I'm gonna read these off and that, and as I read them off, it doesn't mean that they were simple. And it doesn't mean that we didn't, don't care deeply about some of the, uh, um. Reductions that needed to be made. Uh, we revised and right-sized the bus, BOSI's budget. Revised and right-sized department budgets. We, we removed salaries from the salary portion of professional and put them. Completely and fully into grant, uh, funding. We removed a maintenance truck. We reduced vendor contracts. We reduced a Friday bus run. And we eliminated a parking lot repair. And what you see there is again, the reduction of the gap after some tough. But, uh, decisions that were important to make in order for us to have a quality and balanced budget. Today, we're sharing you, with you. A final balanced budget. If you start over on the revenue side, the left side. A critical starting point there is the tax levy at two point nine percent. Then at the bottom. Of that revenue side. You see that decisions were made regarding fund balance and reserves. Again, the, uh, among myself, Tell, Stephanie and myself. We had to make some decisions, but needed to make those decisions in order to balance a budget. But to provide fiscal integrity for the district. Over a number of years. And I'm gonna show you some more information regarding fund balance and reserve in a second. Over on the expenditure side. We had to make some additional and final difficult decisions. Um, some professional development and field trip expenditures. Were reduced, not eliminated, were reduced from district budgets. Department budgets. The majority of our PD. And field trip expenditures will be coming out of our BOSI's funds. Which we get, as you well know, uh, we get reimbursement for funding. We further reduce some BOSI's costs. We, uh, recognized some breakage or funding that's coming back to us. From administrative retirements and one administrative resignation. We made the difficult decision to access. One FTE. We are moving from three psychologists to two psychologists. And we eliminated one FTE. Of the additional elementary sped, um, proposed new positions. We did leave some other positions in and I'll get that. In a second. But those were the revenue changes. As well as the final budget decisions. In order to get the expenditures and the revenues balanced. So, let's take a quick look at the proposed revenue budget. Uh, I can't, uh. Emphasize enough how important it is that our levy increase is going down. That is a critical commitment by the board and something that we as an administrative team are fully, uh, engaged. In making happen. Uh, I also want to share with you the, uh, foundation and expense aids. Um, so, um, here's my little, um. Tale about New York State. New York State, in the constitution of the state, said that the budget must be approved in the constitution on April first. Not so. However, as a board, you must approve your budget by April twenty-two, we'll do that tonight. You must approve your tax report card by April twenty-five, we'll do that too. So we will follow. The stringent requirements. Because we know that that's the way we need to do the work that's responsive to our community. As well as to building a sound fiscal plan, so that's my, my piece, um. I also wanna make sure that, um, we put things into perspective. And again, I'm gonna talk again about that levy, levy, uh, so I, I just did my own little detail. The inflation rate last year, two point nine percent. Our levy was three point seven percent. The inflation rate this year as of March was down to two point four percent. Our levy also went down. As well, two point nine percent. Those are the ways that you as a board have helped us put into perspective. What is appropriate for the community and how to successfully put all the pieces of our budget together. I mentioned to you that I was gonna talk a little bit about fund balances and reserves, so, um. Um, you can see, I wanna go right to the bottom, um, uh, of this, uh, I'm sorry. Um, uh, I wanna start at, uh, uh. The assigned appropriated fund balance carried over from prior year, so I wanna start there. Uh, and that's the third from the top. And, and you can see, uh, five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. After some nice conversations with Michael and Stephanie, we decided that using fund balance. More than reserves was a way for us to get to the deficit. Without putting long-term fiscal stress on the district. So you can see from reserves that we really. Accumulated about two hundred thousand, eighty from worker, workers' comp. Ten from unemployment and one ten from retirement in order to get to that, um, fund balance and reserves. Most important, most important is the fiscal integrity. And another piece is that final column right in the middle, where it says, assigned fund balance. And reserves as part of the budget. We are using two point seven four percent. It's an important, but it's less than three percent. Of our budget. That we are looking to our internal. Reserves, um, and fund balance as a component of revenue. So again, we're working wisely with the state, but levy with fund balance and reserves. Um. Before I go to expenditures, I'm gonna give you twenty seconds, truly twenty seconds on what I know about federal funds. This is what I think I know. Um. We have heard from the administration, it may have been quoted as the Department of Education will be closing or eliminating. We know that that will take, uh, an act of Congress. And we don't know if that's gonna be possible. We know, or we think we know that job layoffs are occurring, and they are. Um, we are uncertain how mandated functions such as civil rights. Are gonna be carried out with the elimination of the Department of Education. Um, and, uh, we also know for sure. That the Federal Department of Education has no say in curriculum matters. We work closely with the state and with your guidance on our local curriculum. What is most significant and what is implied is that Congress, um, has in the past. And can continue to appropriate funds in two of the critical areas. Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And that's typically the Title One for, um, um, our low-income communities. And that the Congress has in the past and can continue to appropriate funds for individuals with disabilities. Uh. The expectation is that Congress is not ready to move. On the funds as much as they are ready to move on the department. But we don't know. Um. We do know that school meals are paid for by the Department of Agriculture, so we can feel very comfortable and not bad. And we don't know where student loans and Pell Grants are being. So that's my best update that I can on federal funds. Let's take a look at our expenditure budget, um, and there you see the twenty-seven point one million dollars that we've been talking about. And how we've moved towards the best programmatic features that we can for our programs now and building on into the future. Um, if you take a look at our administrative portion of this three-part budget. Um, once again, if John, if you give me a click here, once again, you've heard me talk about how we've had a hard application. To take a small reduction in funding. We've, uh, asked in, um, our own finance department to take, uh, significant costs in funding. And you'll see that instructional and administrative support has also taken reduction in funding. Our administrative budget is going down. Uh, and that is not because administrators aren't important. And, and you've heard me say in small organizations, the vast amount of work that they do, um. The dollars in the classroom, we know what research tells us are absolutely essential. So let's take a look at capital. And again, um, we've heard me talk, uh, about the most critical piece in capital being the debt service. Because in the short haul, our budget. Uh, of, uh, capital expenditures at sixty percent of the total budget can't fix. All of the pieces that need annual or long-term maintenance, so we do it through our capital projects. This debt service marks that the most recently completed capital project. Now comes on to our debt service fund. Finally programmed. Um, so I've got a million notes unprogrammed, but I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna share with you the million notes because, um. Um, it's, 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 it's all repetitive. I think what I wanna just make sure that you're aware of is employee benefits reflects. This year, an increase of twelve percent increase in healthcare costs. Um, I want you to know that in the general instruction budget, we still have moved forward three new positions. A six-eight special ed teacher, one FTE, a six-eight special ed teaching assistant. And an elementary FTE for, um, multi-systems student support for a TOSA position. That ties in with much of the work that you just heard, uh, Christie and obviously it ma- makes a difference for. What, uh, Megan and Frank are doing as well, those three positions are still within the program. Boto propositions are outside. The, are outside the budget, um, and, uh, the proposition, I, I, I numbered them wrong. So apologies to Stephanie and apologies to, uh, Kevin, who's gonna be reading these propositions in a moment. Uh, proposition one is really the budget. Proposition two is really the transportation vehicles. And, um, proposition three is the establishment of the capital fund. Um, and, uh, you will see the key pieces, uh, noted in black. Um, uh, for these, um, and you've heard me say before that, um. Our transportation funding is supported by sixty-eight point three percent. Uh, state aid increases, and you've heard me say in regard to proposition two, that there is no cost. In establishing a fund. This is a way for us to put reserves and monies aside. So that over a ten-year period, we have some way supporting those necessary.
It's really just an arbitrary.
Yep, exactly. Alright, so we'll click to the final budget. And here it is, um, with all the revenues on the left-hand side. All expenditures on the right-hand side. And then finally, key dates, um. Uh, again, uh. We, we already know that, um, we're gonna approve a BOSI's budget tomorrow. We want to make sure that we verbalize and again emphasize that. Uh, final superintendent candidates will be visiting our campus on the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And there will be an open forum for community members to meet with them. May thirteenth is the public budget hearing and May twentieth is the public. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and thank everybody, really. We have a long list of everybody, um. Admin, staff, that's the thing I would do about, so. I know it's been a lot of work. We do appreciate it, we all appreciate it. Any questions anybody has, and, and the finance committee's probably seen this enough. Good? Alright, thank you. Nobody? Committees? Yeah, we're gonna, we'll vote on your, your work, we've got a few minutes, yeah. Policy and.
Yeah, we met tonight, the policy committee, uh, we're thinking on the, uh, cellphone usage. Policies, uh, that, um, Governor. Had given some direction toward the budget aspect of it. State budget. We use the cellphones as students and during, um. Classroom and, uh, school being in session to the end of session. So we, we'll take a look at it from, uh, we listed some concerns. Uh, that we may have over the usage of the cellphone and how we're gonna do an adapt to those concerns, make sure that we address all of them. We're going to pull in different aspects of, um. Other groups of individuals such as, um, the union. Uh, law enforcement will be actively engaged in the development of this perspective. As well as taking into consideration the students themselves that are gonna be impacted by it. And also addressing the concerns, questions and comments that parents may have lethal. It's, uh. Going to be a tedious task that has to be completed by July first in place. Um, as per the Governor's, um, directive. So, that pretty much, uh, so we have, uh, structure tonight for that. Um. We'll move forward with that. I can launch with policy committee meetings to address those needs, thank you.
Anything on G C E F?
No, the support keeps coming in and we'll be having a meeting.
Thank you. Alright, on, uh, we'll turn to personnel.
Alright, under personnel, I'd like to ask for consent motion, um, for eight point zero two through eight point zero four.
Very. Any questions? I'll make some comments in a moment.
Yes, I just wanna thank, uh. Mr. Van Epps for his service to the district and, and the valuable contributions that he. Took part in when he was there, I, I wish him well in his, his new position.
Yeah, I was gonna make that same comment, so I appreciate that, uh, certainly we appreciate what. AC, AC and Epps has done in his role here initially as. Uh, elementary principal and then later on in curriculum and, and teaching. So we, uh, we certainly appreciate the time and effort that he has applied here. Alright, wish him well in his next endeavors. Any other comments, thoughts? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So now, just the one, as we get into new business, there's gonna be a lot of reading. So bear with us. This is the area we've been quite a bit. Bear with us. Kevin leads and he needs a break, help.
And so under new business, prior to calling for a consent motion, I'm going to read a resolution, a legal meeting notice, and then three propositions. So first, property tax report card resolution resolved at the Board of Education of the Genesee Central School District. Approves the property tax report card attached to this resolution for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Resolved that the board hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to submit and certify the property tax report card to the New York State Education Department for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. It's up this resolution, so it'll take effect immediately. Resolution legal notice for annual meeting and election. At a regular meeting of the Board of Education, the Board of the Genesee Central School District, now known as the District, held on April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas the annual meeting and election for the District will be conducted on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five for the purpose of voting on the propositions described in the legal notice attached to this resolution. And whereas, the Board of Education has had the opportunity to review the legal notice. Now therefore, the Board of Education, the Genesee Central School District resolves as follows. One, the board approves the legal notice prepared by the district clerk for publication. Two, the board authorizes the district clerk to make edits or modifications to the notice to ensure compliance with legal requirements. Three, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Proposition number one, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget shall the Board of Education of the Genesee Central School District be hereby authorized to expend the amount of twenty-seven million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for the school budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year and levy the necessary tax therefore. Proposition number two, transportation. The Board of Education of the Genesee Central School District, the County of Livingston, State of New York, the District is hereby authorized to purchase school buses for the use by the District and to expend three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars therefore. Section B, that a tax is hereby voted in the correct amount of not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay such a cost. Said tax to be levied in installment in such years and in such amounts as shall be determined by said Board of Education. And section C, in anticipation of said tax, bonds or bond anticipation notes of the District are hereby authorized to be issued in the principal amount of not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and taxes hereby voted to pay the interest on said bonds or bond anticipation notes is the same shall become due and payable. Proposition number three, capital reserve. The Board of Education of the Genesee Central School District in the County of Livingston, the State of New York, the District is hereby authorized to establish a new capital reserve fund in accordance with the provisions of educational law, section three-six, three-six-five-one, to be designated twenty-twenty-five Facilities Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. The fund for the purpose of funding in whole or in part future cap, future capital improvements or similar projects, including the acquisition of original furnishings, equipment, machinery, and apparatus in or around any such capital improvements. The probable funding term of which will not exceed ten years from the date of establishment. The ultimate principal amount therein, not to exceed four million dollars inclusive of accrued interest. And such amount is in such extent to be provided from the district's fund balance as well as other sources available therefore. I'd like to ask for a motion of consent for items nine point zero two through nine point zero six.
Second.
Any questions on anything that we just, Kevin just read.
Make them read it again, please.
No questions. I just wanna reiterate that the proposition three for the capital reserve is, is just for the creation of, in, in place to eventually allocate funds to that, to be accessed and we have to have full approval.
Thank you. As Lee stated earlier, the arbitrary amount of four million has been chosen, but no bad amount, really. We'll put something in here. Any other elements, questions? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, for that, so move.
Set.
Good.
Alright, under, yep, under business office, I'd like to ask for a motion for consent for items seven point zero two, seven point zero three.
Second.
Just one quick comment, a good thank you to all those who donated the funds for various events. Very generous of all of them. Thank you very much. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. For that, to know when one's gonna go into a bit of a session. So we will, we will enter into, ask for a motion.
I'd have a motion to send to executive session, suppose, personal.
There'll be two items. There'll be one, a contract with a potential superintendent discussion. And also a, any contract with former employee, right?
Second.
All in favor, enter executive session?
Aye.
And I think, aye, opposed? Right, as of eight o'clock, we are in executive session.